Twenty-third, we will call this meeting to order. I would ask that those who are willing and able to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting on February 16th, 2021.
Has every member had a chance to review the minutes? If so, is there any discussion of proposed changes to the minutes? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor Johnson. Members will cast their votes. With the result of six yeas to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items one through 21.
Does every member have a chance to review the consent agenda? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to pull item six.
Item six will be pulled and will be placed directly below the consent agenda for discussion. Other comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item six. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk, open the roll. Members cast the vote. With the result of six yeas to zero nays, the motion does pass. We are on item six. The Chair will give the floor to Councilmember Frye for a description of item six.
Thank you. Actually, the question I have is for staff. When we approved this back in February, we put in the requirement that it come back to council for a year for review at the end of that term. This new amendment doesn't have that language at the end of the two-year term, and I think that's something that we should do to honor what we requested back in February. So I would like to see if that is something that the rest of council would agree as an amendment to this and make a motion for that.
Seeing as a friendly amendment, is there, staff, is there any intent in the reissuing of this? Was there any language put in that would meet the intent of Councilmember Frye's motion? Or should we motion add that?
Mayor, we had intended to bring it back, but I think it's good to have it in the motion, and then it's clear what the council's intent is.
Excellent. The Chair will divert the time, or divert the floor to Councilmember Frye for an official motion.
Thank you. I would just like to add to this amend, or to this motion, sorry, to this item that there would be a council review before, at the end of the two-year term, before any automatic extensions are applied.
Chair will second. The amendment, the first vote is on the amendment. Is there any discussion for that amendment? See, now we'll take a vote on the amendment, and then we'll take a vote on the final action. As Clerk, open the roll. The Frye amendment passes six to nothing. Back on the original, the original item, is there any more discussion about the original item as amended? See none. I will make a motion to accept staff's recommended action for item six, the WAVE Management Service Agreement extension as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk, open the roll. Members cast the vote. With the result of six yeas to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Report of Board of Bids and Contracts dated February 22nd, 2021.
Welcome and good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Handling Department of Finance here for the February 22nd Board of Bids, as well as the infrastructure report. First engineering bid we have is wastewater treatment plant two, UV lightning protection, Lender &amp; Associates for $85,573.95. 2021 sanitary sewer reconstruction phase one, Amigo excavation and plumbing, $88,342.30. 2021 OP-3 joint crack seal phase three, Circle C paving and construction, the contract has been awarded for $270,000. Water distribution system tied to serve Marionetta, second edition Apex excavating for groups one through four, for an aggregate bid total of $173,144.55. Evergreen library and neighborhood resource center upgrades, recommendation is Van Asdell Construction for the base bid of $720,000. Alternate one deduct of $4,800, alternate two deduct of $3,500, for an aggregate total of $711,700. $58,000 GVWR dump trucks with snowplow and spreader, Summit Truck Group for the base bid with options one and options eight, for a total of $153,910. The quarter four 2020 infrastructure bid awards is reported quarterly. The infrastructure bids totaled $15,502,999 in quarter four, which was 17.7 million for 2020 together. The infrastructure bids totaled 84 million of the 93 million bids that were awarded in 2020. These are the breakdown for the fourth quarter of the number of bids that we had in October, November, and December, as well as how many bids we had in each quarter of the year 2020. This is the bid awards by Funding Source for quarter four as well as 2020. And then this is our quarterly report for minority and EBE payments that were made. The payments to minority and EBE vendors was at 16.51% for quarter four and 19.76% for the year 2020. This is our purchasing procurement website, as well as our open request for proposals. That is the Board of Bids recommendations. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Discussion on the item. There's no questions for staff or discussion on the item. Then I will make a motion to accept staff's recommended actions to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded by the Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk, open the roll. Members cast the vote. With the result of six yeas to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Petitions for public improvements.
Welcome and good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers, Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. The item before you this morning is a request for approval of petitions for public improvements. Just a quick reminder, signatures on all petitions represent 100% of the improvement district for each one, and all petitions are valid per Kansas statute. The first development is new and revised petitions for RF addition, which is east of Rock Road, south of 31st Street South. In May of 2019 and February of 2020, the City Council approved petitions for water sewer and paving improvements. The developers now submitted revised petitions, as well as several new petitions for additional phases to modify the lot configurations to meet current market conditions. So this includes petitions for two new phases for water and paving, as well as revised petitions for the existing water, sanitary sewer, and paving improvements. The second item is new petitions for Riverside Patio Homes addition, which is west of Broadway, south of 13th Street North. These petitions are a requirement for a new residential development, and they will provide improvements for water, sewer, drainage, and paving. With that, staff requests the City Council approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the amending resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions of staff? There's no questions. They're in discussion from the bench. There's no discussion. Then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the petitions and budgets, and adopt the resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk, open the roll. Members cast the vote. With the result of six yeas to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
In the interest of keeping things smooth, let's first open up to appointments. There are no appointments. We will open up to announcements. Number seven, announcement. I guess I'll be the one to make the announcement and wish the Vice Mayor a very happy 25th birthday. Vice Mayor Johnson, we're happy you're here, spending your birthday time with us at work. And the camera's actually on you, according to a little screen here, in case you want to, want to give a speech or anything. No?
No speech. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and give the floor over to Councilmember Frye to the singing of happy birthday.
That ain't gonna happen.
Dick Bob's running out of the room, so he's not going to sing. All right, so with that, are there any further announcements for the good of the, of the body? And I'm looking over at Legal. I don't think we had any blue sheets today. Okay, very good. Well, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting, and then we're going to get right into our City Council workshop. So I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk, open the roll. Members cast the vote. With the result of six yeas to zero nays, this meeting is adjourned, and we will turn the floor over to the City Manager for the City Council workshop.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, we have three items for your discussion today. All three of them are significant. The first one is review of our 2021 recommended legislative agenda at the federal level. And to go over that with you today, we have Jim Davenport, who is our representative in Washington, and he'll hit some of the high points, and then I know he'll be glad to take any questions that you have regarding the agenda, recommended agenda. Jim?
Welcome, Jim. Glad to have you.
Good morning. How's everybody?
Wonderful.
Happy.
Happy birthday, Brandon. Wish you the best. Sorry you're at work, as the mayor pointed out.
There's no place he'd rather be.
I'll go through this so we can get going, and you all can get through your workshop. I can't see you on my video at the moment. I can just see myself, but I assume you can all see me. Do you all have the federal agenda in front of you, or should I be sharing that?
No, Jim, they've got it.
We do have it.
Okay. Okay, great. I'm just going to start right off then with, I'll skip over the table of contents, and we'll go to North Junction. You, the city was one of the successful recipients of a build grant for FY20. Very happy that you all received 21 million for that project. That certainly opened the door for what I hope to be additional federal assistance in the future, which is why we continue to have it on here. There certainly is discussion of a large infrastructure package. That would be next on the table here in Congress after they finish up the COVID relief package. We don't exactly know what the infrastructure package will look like, but I think what the intent is, is that it's a combination of what would be a typical surface transportation reauthorization bill, which is done about every five to seven years, coupled with some legislation that would fund broadband and water and sewer projects, and probably energy efficiency as well. So we're going to look at that bill as a, as an additional opportunity for, for funding for North Junction. And with that, I'm going to move on to the next project unless anybody wants to comment or question on that.
Seems to be no, no questions. Floor is yours.
Okay. The next item is the Amtrak extension. Mayor, you and I spoke recently, as did I. I spoke with Councilmember Claycom and the City Manager about Amtrak's intent to propose their 2035 plan in the near future. That could be coming out, I guess at this time, probably in March, based on the conversation I had with them. Their 2035 plan intends to list all the additional corridors and Amtrak service they propose for the future, and they're looking for a large infusion of federal dollars to help them build this new network. They reached out to you, Mayor, and I spoke with them as well, because they plan to have the city of Wichita highlighted on that proposal. So our next step is to wait for the release of that proposal, and then once that's out, I'm going to reengage with you all at the city to essentially support their proposal by having you all reach out to Secretary Buttigieg, as well as your congressional delegation, and probably members of Congress on the House Transportation Committee, basically to support their proposal, which would support your project. What I would expect to see, or what I hope to see, is that the funding that Amtrak is requesting will also be part of that infrastructure package that I mentioned. Biden's, President Biden's Build Back Better Plan, as well as the House Moving Forward Act, are basically the legislative vehicles that would house the infrastructure package, and both of those proposals have additional money for Amtrak in them, quite a bit. So we're going to keep pushing on that in hopes that it will support your project in the future. So we're kind of waiting on Amtrak, and obviously if you hear something from Amtrak before I do, please let me know. There's no questions on that. I'll move right along to the Equus Beds project. Any comments on Amtrak?
See no questions.
Okay. Your ASR project, Equus Beds, we, we did get some favorable language in the House Energy and Water Bill for FY21. That language carved out 20 million from the Bureau of Reclamation's budget for aquifer recharge projects in the Great Plains. And with that carve out, we were able to specifically request money for your project from reclamation. They put out a thing, a document, they call it a work plan or a spend plan, I've heard it called both, which allocates their money, and we were able to crack the door open a little bit and get a million dollars for your project. We've been working on this for a number of years. Very pleased with that one million, because what I, what I hope is that, as I said, it cracked the door open, and that we're going to pursue additional money in FY22. At this point, I have already had conversations with Congressman Estes's office about pursuing that language again in the House Energy and Water Bill for FY22. I'll have similar conversations with your senators as well, and hopefully we can go after more than a million next, next year. It would be whenever Congress finishes the Energy and Water Bill for this year. I got some, I've heard your staff is working already with the Reclamation Regional Office in Austin, so I think everything is, is underway and working well at this point. Any other, any comments or questions on that?
Questions on the item?
On the item.
See none.
See none.
All right. Your next project is the biological nutrient removal project for your wastewater treatment plant. You are all going to pursue another WIFTI loan. I think the WIFTI office knows the city of Wichita fairly well at this point. I, I'm here to assist with that loan effort. If we need to do any additional meetings with their office, where their WIFTI office on, on this, I'm happy to set that up. But you've got a great track record with them, so I feel pretty good about this project Anything on that? I'll just keep going.
No questions.
The, sorry, go ahead.
No, just said, the floor is yours. There's no questions.
Okay. All right, great. Public and affordable housing improvements. You've got some legislative policy statements on here to support legislation on low, low-income housing tax credit, and also on the creation of local community-based solutions for housing agencies and local governments. We continue to monitor and track any legislation to this regard. I know the Affordable Housing Credit Improvement Act of 2019 will need to be reintroduced. I don't believe it has at this point, but I'll be on the lookout for that. Any additional, you know, I know there's rental, rental assistance in COVID relief and, and any, any items like that, I'll certainly bring them to your attention. I'll move along to the transport ozone pilot program. This one's a bit tricky in that it's sort of an out-of-the-box request for, well, we worked, we started to work with EPA, but then we, we've been looking for a, a place to house this legislatively, to find a bill that we could get a pilot program. It's a, it's a difficult task. I'm going to keep looking at opportunities. It may be more difficult in the new Congress than it was in the past Congress, based on the fact that, you know, climate change is certainly going to be a big item with the, the new Democratic majority, so something like this, they, they may see it as going in the opposite direction, but I, I think we, we have a good case to make, so we will look for opportunities in any climate change legislation to pursue this pilot program. Broadband service, next item. There is, as I mentioned, in the infrastructure package, there's a number of items they're looking to include in addition to the typical surface transportation. Broadband is one of them, so I'm hopeful that if we do a big infrastructure bill, we're going to see some funding to build out broadband service in places where it's needed. So I will keep you apprised of that. And then the last item, I'm going to take up a couple of items here, funding for city services. First, the COVID relief package, as I mentioned, it's going to be on the House floor this week, then it's going to move over to the Senate in March. I'm hopeful that it will be finalized, probably by mid-March, I think is the target, if not a little earlier. As it stands right now, the city of Wichita, if the allocation is $350 billion for state and local governments, the city of Wichita is on track to receive $67 million from the estimates that were produced by the House Oversight Committee. You would receive that money within 60 days of submitting some certification documents to Department of Treasury that would have to track your, your revenue losses and so forth. So we're, we're very hopeful. I'm fairly confident that bill's going to pass. It's been a while. We've been working on this state and local relief since last spring, but it finally looks, looks to be something that's going to pass, so I feel good about that. The second item, which I want to capture here, is the potential that Congress returns to earmarks. There is a lot of talk about allowing members of Congress to seek projects again for communities. We should see a proposal from the House Appropriations Committee in the coming weeks, and once that proposal is out, I will share it with you and let you know if there's opportunities for us. Typically, a request for a city, though, you're not talking about huge dollars, a lot of projects, and this is going back to when I used to pursue projects for cities prior to 2011. You'd see funding amounts for half a million dollars to 2 million, somewhere in that range, for all sorts of things, transportation projects, water and sewer, police technology, after-school programs, things like that. So I'll keep you apprised of that. There could be an opportunity for a, for us to go after some funding for what I'll, I'll deem a smaller project for the city. Other than that, I think I'll, I'll stop there. The rest of these items on here are appropriations requests for programs that would support, support the city of Wichita. Any questions or comments?
Questions or discussion?
Yep. Jim, this is Brandon. So on the potential smaller project funding, would something that has been funded before be seen favorable, in your opinion? And I say that referencing, you know, there's a lot of talk about the food desert issue we have, and I know before Congressman T-Hart helped with the Save-A-Lot on 13th and Grove, so that, that's a project that worked out and still pretty successful. Is that something that could be considered?
Yeah, something that has a track record is certainly something that could be considered. Your Equus Beds project would certainly be something we could pursue, because it's an authorized project by the, by the Bureau of Reclamation, so that would be something we would go after. I failed to mention that before. All of these requests would have some sort of match, depending on what federal agency has oversight over the project, but yeah, anything that's got a good track record is going to do, do better, I think.
Thanks.
Yep.
Jim, you must have done a pretty good job. There's not many questions right here. I think you've done great keeping us in the loop, not just today, but as things change in DC and where our priorities are. Doesn't seem to be many more questions.
I do have a off legislative agenda question, Jim. Do you have any updates on where this administration or Congress is with Opportunity Zones?
There was a, I don't, no, on, on the administration, there was a bill introduced that just caught my eye, I think it came out yesterday, on extending Opportunity Zones past the years where it is supposed to terminate. I can share that with you, and I'm, I'd be happy to look into the current administration's intent. I haven't heard anything at this point.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be interested. Last year, we had an opportunity to hear from former Speaker Paul Ryan about his thoughts on it and where it could go, and I'd heard some talk about potentially trying to make it better to incentivize lower-income neighborhoods a little more so than some of the projects we've seen, but I hadn't heard anything since.
Right. Yeah, I'll, I'll send that legislation along.
Okay.
Further discussion on any legislative topic at the national level for Jim?
Just want, just want to thank you for all you're doing, Jim. I appreciate it. Been working with you for a while now, and really appreciate what you've been able to do for us and what you continue to do for the city, so thank you.
Jim, I guess.
Thank you, Council. Thank you very much.
Jim, I guess once we get over the COVID situation, we've got to have you come on out to Wichita so you can get more of a hands-on feel for the city that you worked so hard for, and you can see some of the projects that you have helped us get funding for. So I'd love to host you out here one time in the near future, maybe bring your kids. It'd be a good time.
I would love to come out again. It was April, I think I came out April 2019, if I recall. I do want to see the baseball stadium. I want to go to a game, so I'm going to plan it around that time, if that's okay with you.
Yes, as we all do. Yes, that's where we're, we'll wait till that. All right, there doesn't seem to be any more questions or discussion on this topic. We'll let you get on with your day, Jim. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Mayor, thank you. Just one last comment on the federal agenda. We'll bring this to you for your consideration in the first meeting in March. That'll be the formal adoption of the agenda.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Jim. The second item has been over a year in the works, and it has to do with the master plan regarding our food system, talking about, or the Vice Mayor mentioned food deserts, but it's much beyond that. And so I'm going to ask Councilmember Tuttle to kick this off. She's been instrumental in her work, in the work, in the preparation of this plan. I think, and it dates back to her time before she was on council even, so with that, I'll let her do the introduction.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And there is a sign here, this says if you're comfortable, you can remove your mask when you're speaking to the council. I'm comfortable with that, so if y'all are okay, that way you can maybe hear me a little better. Thank you. I haven't been on this side of the bench in a couple of years, so this feels a little weird, but I'm super glad to be here today. Thank you for the opportunity just to give a few thoughts and to kick it off, and then I'm going to turn it over to some folks who've been really involved in this work as well. Definitely want to first start off by giving some praise and accolades. I want to thank all the city staff who've been involved in this. If you look at page two of this fantastic 19-page document, you can look at all the city staff that have had a footprint somewhere in this process. Also, I want to thank the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita, to which I'm really grateful to still be the chair of, and focusing on physical activity and healthy eating. Also, the Food Policy Committee, who really was the genesis for this work and where most of this work began and has continued. And then also the Steering Committee for this And then also the Steering Committee for this project. And again, if you look on page two, you can see all the names of the folks. And then Cory's going to explain it a little bit more after me, but the community, who also has had a very large presence and involvement in this process. This wasn't something that was done by just a group of foodies and people who care about this topic, but the community overall. And then finally, the Kansas Health Foundation needs to have some recognition and praise. They are the ones who gave the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita the grant that allowed us to hire a consultant to navigate us through this process. You're going to hear from Eileen, our consultant, in a moment. And in case you're wondering why I'm here, and our fearless leader Tammy Creer, Tammy is the Chair of the Food Policy Committee. She welcomed Madison Rose last week, which was a little bit earlier than we all thought. And so that's why I get to be here with you today. So this is going to be our agenda and we will indeed keep it brief. And I know I've had conversations with most of you about this already, and this is just the beginning place for the, the next steps in this work. But we're going to talk just a little bit about the background, the process of developing the master plan, what the plan actually is, and then have some discussion and next steps. So what is a master food plan? People have been asking this, I think, consistently, especially since they've been starting to hear about it. But the food system is really the process, what we call of how food gets from the farm to your table and how it moves through the process. And you can see there's a great diagram on the right side of the screen. That's not something that we've developed, that's been utilized for years by communities all across the nation. So we're kind of borrowing it for this one because it works for us too. But it's, the food system is a very large process and it includes farmers, manufacturers, processors, distributors, and eventually the residents as consumers. And as you can see, there's many, there's many cogs in this wheel and all are equally important. And we're hoping that through the development of this master food plan, the 10-year plan, all of them will be addressed. So why do we need, why does Wichita and Cedric County need a master food plan? Residents have told us consistently over the years that I've been doing this work that there's a strong interest in building a robust local food system in Wichita and in Cedric County. But we really need a roadmap to be able to guide that work. One thing that the City of Wichita, I think it does exceptionally well is we develop plans. We have a bicycle plan, a pedestrian plan, an aquatics plan. And it helps to guide the work so that we know where we're going and that we have some strategy involved. So the community needs to know that and they need to know where and how to invest our time and our treasure, our resources and our partnerships to best support a vibrant local food economy and a food system. Also, past studies by K-State Research and Extension and the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita point to some exciting opportunities if we get this right. And that's obviously our goal is to make sure that we get this right. So a Wichita-Cedric County Master Food System Plan can help us address health concerns. But also, I really want to emphasize and I hope you'll get the flavor for this today, there's a major economic opportunity with food. There are three common themes that weave us all together, no matter where you live, learn, earn, play and pray. And that's air, water and food. And food is something that no matter who you are, in some way it touches your life each day. So how did we get here? So way back in 2013, when I was still at the Greater Wichita YMCA, we did a food desert study. And the food desert study and why you should care told us for the first time in the community that we have 44 square miles of food deserts in Wichita back then. I anticipate if we did the study again, we'd probably get some even increased numbers. We also knew that 25% of our population lives in a food desert. For me, for example, it's Tuesday and I've probably already been to the grocery store a couple of times, right? But for many of our residents, that's not how it happens every day. And so the, the formal definition of a food desert is living more than one mile from a full-service grocery store and in a zip code that's predominantly low-income. So normally, again, we see areas of color, low-income. And, and why we should care is also not only the food desert, but if you look at the food desert study, and I hope you all will or you have in the past, that there's also extreme price fluctuations depending on what zip code you live in. For example, a gallon of milk in District Two probably costs less than a gallon of milk in District One. From that, the leadership team for the Health and Wellness Coalition said it's not okay that we know we have food deserts and not do something about it. So myself and a doctoral candidate at WSU went and did key informant interviews with residents in food deserts. And we only asked them two questions. We asked them if you eat healthy, how, and if you don't eat healthy, why not? And so we were able to identify six key factors for why people don't eat healthy in our community. And again, you can go into the Health and Wellness Coalition website and thoroughly enjoy this great study. But we learned that cost, quality, transportation, store sources and personal factors were the main reasons why people weren't having access to healthy foods. So we, we really stepped back and said, you know, now we know we have a problem. Now we know what the root cause of the problem is. Now we need to know what we're going to do about it. And that's when the Food Policy Committee became a formal organization under the umbrella of the Health and Wellness Coalition. And then the last study that we did is looking with K-State Research and Extension and the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita, our local food system assessment in 2015, where we found that $1 billion is spent annually on food in that year alone. And if 5% of that was local, just 5%, that would be 50 million, 54 million dollars. So we updated again in 2018 and you can see the numbers escalated even more. So again, it's not just health, it's also an economic factor in our community. So just a little bit of the past work, because I want you all to know that we didn't just wake up and decide to have a master food plan. This has been really rich and robust work that the Health and Wellness Coalition has been focusing on for almost two decades now. We've had our annual We All Eat events, and I know some of you have been there, where we gather together 600 residents in an afternoon at K-State Research and Extension just to learn more about food in different ways. How to grow it, how to eat it healthier, how to shop for it, where to get it. We also did food tours. You know, we were trying to be all hip and cool and threw a bunch of people in a bus every year. We went to Vice Mayor Johnson's community garden in his district. We went to the food bank, we went to different food distribution centers and food pantries where people visit just so our community could learn more about the food system in Wichita. We also did entrepreneurial workshops for prospective producers or producers. We did these annually and each year I was pleasantly surprised that they completely filled up. And the entrepreneurial workshop wasn't about how to build a, how to grow a better tomato. It was about how to grow a tomato and make money selling the tomato. And so it was more on the business aspect or the entrepreneurial aspect of being a grower in our community. And pleasantly surprised not only by the number of people who are interested, but the diversity in the growers. And we saw people of color, we saw younger generations, which was exciting for us. We also received funding for the Double Up Food Bucks. So most people are familiar with the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program SNAP benefits, or sometimes it's also called food stamps. But we were able to secure funding through the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita and the Greater Wichita YMCA that if you received this benefit, you could actually double the amount that you receive if you went to a farmer's market. So just another way for people not only to have more access to healthy food, but it was helping the lower, lower-income populations receive more healthy food and it kept the money circulating in our local economy because it was local growers that were selling the product. We also have been working significantly with food donation, food policy adoption by local organizations. We always know that any kind of local movement or groundswell starts best at the grassroots level and then moves up to where we are today. But we've talked about food donation policies, Healthy Bites, Healthy Work Sites, a sample policy for work sites and what they can do or organizations can do just to try and make a healthier environment and also to make awareness of healthy food choices. And then we have an ICT Food Circle Facebook group and, and other collaborations. So just one more slide for me before I get to turn it over to the, the real geniuses in the room. But we also feel that this has synergistic initiatives. I spoke with Evan Rozelle, our dear friend with Greater Wichita Partnership. And just to, to circle back with Project Wichita, something that we talked a lot about in a community a couple of years ago, but maybe haven't in the, in the new COVID world. But there were two specific areas that we feel with this work aligns with Project Wichita and the report to the community that was put out. So with that, it's my opportunity now, I'm going to turn it over to Cory and he's going to give you a little bit of insight on the process of how this plan was actually developed and the community engagement. So thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you, Councilmember. Cory, welcome.
Thank you, Cory Bucktop Office of Community Services. And I want to talk a little bit about phase two of this process, the community engagement from January to September of last year. So here you see members of our Steering Committee for this project. And there's a well-rounded group here of members, as you see. This group met at least monthly to help shape the plan from the outset, provided valuable input along the way and helped bring to fruition the plan you see today. There's also a lot of robust staff support for this plan that engaged in this project as well. This is the community engagement process that we used. We broke it down into four phases, some that ran concurrently. We started off with a community-wide survey that launched last January and went through September. We then attended pop-up events, as we called them, just events from community organizations. We hosted our own roundtable events. And then finally, we had plan, objective and action set prioritization events. Our community-wide survey lasted the better part of, of last year. And we use that to gather perceptions of the local food system from over 2,200 residents. And we engage them in prioritizing the plan's goals. The survey process was critical to help us narrow down the list of potential food plan goals from eight to the final three. And here you see a sample of one of the questions that was asked. Next, we attended 25 or 26 pop-up events. Steering Committee members would attend community organization meetings such as community coalitions. They went to the district advisory board meetings and local food producer workshops to engage in the food planning process. So we solicited feedback and promoted participation in the survey. And there you see the full list of the events that we attended. We also hosted six roundtables and where we invited over 120 stakeholders in our food system to provide insight on key policy barriers and opportunities for each of the proposed goal areas. So you see how we broke down each roundtable event that was specific to a goal area. We started off meeting in person and then transitioned to Zoom meetings eventually. After the survey concluded and we went through some of the data, we reached back out to over 60 of the key participants in our roundtable discussions. So those are the content matter experts in their particular field. And we asked them to help us prioritize the objectives. Everything kind of changed once the pandemic came closer to home. So we had to transition to meeting online. And it really interrupted our community engagement process. That's why you see it went from January all the way to September. We had to cancel previously scheduled in-person events and coalition meetings where community presentations would have taken place. Additionally, some of the roundtable discussions, as I said, transitioned to a virtual format because of in-person meeting limitations. But despite the challenges caused by the pandemic, community members and stakeholders responded to the requests for information and provided rich insights that shaped the final plan that follows. So with that, I'm going to invite Eileen to continue. I believe she's on the Teams meeting.
Chair recognizes the Honorable Eileen Horn, former State Representative and colleague. Welcome and glad to have you here. Wish, wish to be here in person so we could show off Wichita to you, but glad you're here nonetheless. Oh, I think you're on mute, which is weird because I think we're the same generation and we should be better. There we go. Welcome.
All right, great. Well, thanks, thanks Mayor Whipple and Councilmembers. I also have Kathy Nyquist here, she's our principal at New Venture Advisors. So we were the team, the consultant team hired to facilitate the food system master plan for the city. So at New Venture Advisors, we are business and planning consultants that help communities strategically invest in their food systems. So our role in this process was, was to guide, to help collect data and to work with the Steering Committee and the community to, to flesh out the specific planned components that you see in front of you today. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to give a high-level overview of the goals and objectives on the next couple of slides. And then we're going to pause and take questions and hopefully answer questions you all have about the, the specifics of the plan, if you, if you have any. And since I'm not in the room, I may need some help with advancing the slides. So if we could go back to the one that Cory was on, the arrows. Excellent, thanks. So a little bit about how the food plan is organized. As you see on page seven of your plan, we worked with the Steering Committee to identify initially eight goals for the food plan, which we knew was way too many, but we went ahead and decided to go for eight and then, you know, winnow it down as we went. And so the plan is organized with the main goals. Under each of those goals are measurable and more specific objectives. And then underneath the objectives are the concrete action steps that are recommendations for both the city and the county to pursue. I want to take a moment here to talk about how those recommendations and objectives are targeted. Obviously, in a food system, there are so many different players. There are nonprofit partners, there are other agencies, specifically federal and state agencies. There's the entire business community, there's producers. So we narrowed the focus of the recommendations to specifically what the city and the county can focus on and can do to leverage a strong and vibrant food system. So you'll see there, there are lots of recommendations that, you know, private citizens can do and, and nonprofit partners. Those are not in this plan. Instead, we tried to stay really focused on recommendations for you all as elected officials and as community leaders for what you can do with your tools in, in local government. Next slide, please. Okay, so we're going to dig into the goals. The first goal was actually not on our list of eight, but we heard it over and over again. In every community engagement session, it came through loud and clear in the survey that what stakeholders really were sharing with us is that they felt like the food system was fractured. That, that as consumers, they didn't know where to buy local food. As producers, they didn't know what the rules were for urban agriculture and what they could do to grow in the city. If they were interested in gardening, they didn't know where they could find one. If they were a business, they wanted to compost, they didn't, they didn't know how to go about doing that. And so we heard it over and over and it really rose to the top as kind of a foundational goal. So this one, we felt was really important to list first because it sets the foundation for progress on areas later in the plan. So this goal, as you can see, is about fostering coordination and education in the food system. It has five objectives. And that first objective, objective number one, as Cory said, these are, these are prioritized. So objective number one was the one that we heard over and over. And then when we went back to the community, they said, yes, that's it. This recommendation has to do with the creation of a food and farm council. And so if we can go to the next slide, I want to give you a little preview of, of that recommendation. So appointed food and farm councils are actually, there are hundreds of them across the nation. And actually, 26 of them in the state of Kansas. We have the most residents that are represented by food policy councils in the nation. We actually are beating California and, and Michigan, which is pretty great to brag about. Also, peer cities like Omaha, Kansas City and St. Louis have food and farm councils. These are advisory boards or advisory bodies that report to the elected officials at the local level and provide recommendations for how to strengthen the food system through policies and programs. As you can see on the Kansas map, they, they look really different across the state depending on where you live. Some are regional, so for example, in Northwest Kansas, that's a nine-county region that has a food and farm council. The Greater Kansas City Food Policy Council includes the, the metro counties on the Kansas side. I was part of the Douglas County Food Policy Council and we are a joint City of Lawrence and Douglas County advisory body. But all of them serve to collect feedback from constituents, to convene stakeholders in the food system, to look for funding. And then they serve up those recommendations to you all as elected officials to help inform your decisions about how to support a robust and vibrant food system. Next slide. So the second goal that Councilmember Tuttle talked about as well is you all have clearly done a good job of educating the community about the challenge of food deserts because that rose to the top as the key issue that residents wanted tackled was addressing the 44 square miles of the City of Wichita that are considered food deserts. So in this area, in this goal area, you'll, you'll see several objectives. And when we talk about access to healthy food, we were talking about all of the different things that impact access. So it's geographic access, can you get to a grocery store, are you close enough? Do you have transportation? So, or are there built environment barriers, like the bus doesn't stop there or there's no bike lane for you to safely get there? So it's the transportation and the geographic access piece, but it's also the affordability piece. So you'll see recommendations and action steps in this section of the plan related to programs to reduce the cost of healthy food and also to strengthen the emergency food assistance programs in the community. So this one came through loud and clear. It was the highest ranked of the goals, both when we asked citizens what their priority was for themselves and what their priority was for the community. This was the goal that rose to the top. Next slide. So the third goal, and we ended up narrowing it down to three, so this is the last one. This goal is about increasing local food production. So as you saw in council member Tuttle's slides, there's a strong economic reason to increase local food production, to get those dollars circulating locally and to capture those in Wichita and Sedgwick County. And there's a lot that the city and the county can actually do to support this sector in terms of economic development supports for local farm and food businesses. You all are large purchasers of food along with the school district and the county. You can use your purchasing power to influence the sector and to purchase local food when possible. You can also provide regulatory clarity and adopt policies that are supportive of urban agriculture. So we heard from producers that they were unclear what they could do within city limits. And you all could adopt policies that clarify that and make that easier for urban producers to navigate. And also, there's a lot of enthusiasm for gardening right now as we saw, you know, the pandemic really highlighted for folks the need to build a more resilient food system and to have maybe some personal resilience too when there are disruptions in the food system. And so Rebecca McMahon with K State Research and Extension was on the steering committee. I remember several calls where she couldn't believe how her Zoom classes were filling up. I mean, she had hundreds of people signed up for gardening classes in March and April. So we know there's a lot of enthusiasm in the community for kind of that personal resilience piece of increasing local food production. So those were the three main goals. As I said, each had several objectives. And then within those objectives are specific action steps. And I think we'll stop here and just open it up for questions. I'm happy to take any and Cory can jump in as well. And we'd just love to hear your thoughts.
Questions?
I know, I know, I do have a question, but first just want to thank you all for the hard work on this and the time, effort, and engagement. This is something really important to our community. So my question around the third goal, and not to put my colleague on the spot, but when we look at objective three, providing regulatory clarity, do we have any potential data from what those hurdles are and suggestions to what we could do potentially to help out? I guess that, either council member Tuttle or...
Eileen, do you want to go first and then I'll jump in with my thoughts?
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to respond. So we had several urban producers who were on the steering committee and representatives from the farmer's market. And I think it was primarily just a lack of certainty around can I raise animals and how many? And can I have an on-farm farm stand? Is that allowed within city limits? Or, you know, kind of a good example, so I live in the city of Lawrence and the city of Lawrence had a similar challenge and similar concerns expressed by producers. So what they did is they created a zoning category for urban agriculture. And then they published on their website, this is what urban agriculture is, this is what's in, this is what's out. You can have chickens, you cannot raise cattle on your urban lot, right? So they made it clear. And in a lot of cases, it was really just clarifying the rules that already existed. But as you all know, planner speak is really difficult for the average citizen to navigate. And so in a lot of ways, it was really just clarifying what was already in the zoning code and within planning policies. And then some tweaks to make it a little more urban agriculture friendly.
And just maybe to add to that, one of the things that we did, but still need to codify and continue is looking even internally at the city of Wichita, all of the ordinances that we have regarding food. I remember when we first started talking about this and talking with the city staff, everybody said, we don't do food, we don't do food. And then we realized really quickly, we do have a footprint in food within the city of Wichita as our organization. And so looking at ordinances that exist and do they need to be modified or do they potentially even need to be eliminated? And then what do we not have that could help in this process? So it's still ongoing. And we are just FYI, Eileen and I are going to be meeting with the county next week and doing this very similar presentation for them. So we'll make the same request to them to look internally at what they have. And I think Bob wants to make a comment? Or you looked like you did.
I do.
Okay.
When I went through the study or the food plan, there were two things that were really important to me. One was the identification of the areas where we have food desert. I mean, that's a significant amount of land in the city. But the other piece of this that I don't want to go unnoticed is the economic development potential here. They talked about in Sedgwick County, over $1.6 billion was spent for food in 2018. If only 5% of that is produced here in Sedgwick County, that's $80 million in economic development or economic growth or income for this county. And I think that's really key. And the whole reason why I'm supportive of the food and farm council so that we can develop the relationships with the farm community to be able to enhance that component. You know, we keep talking about diversifying our economy. This is something we can do here at home and I think we can do in partnership. I've had great conversation with the county manager in that regard. And I think partnerships with the Farm Bureau and others in Sedgwick County could lead to a great initiative in that regard.
I promised my colleagues I wouldn't talk too much about this because this is kind of my baby. But that's one of the things too, when we talked about synergistic initiatives is with Project Wichita and the report to the community is obviously the Health and Wellness Coalition was named as one of the strategies, but we were so bold as to say with the food policy committee, with the food master plan, sorry, that it can help strengthen and support regional entrepreneur ecosystem, just for that very reason. So, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I really want to thank everybody for this. I think this is a great plan, a great place to start. And I want to thank the community that took the time to actually work on this because I know it has been a long process, but a labor of love for many people. Has this been presented to the county? Have they seen it yet?
Monday, Eileen, Eileen, you may not even know this yet, but we'll be talking after this. I just got word from the county manager that Eileen and myself will be going to speak with the commissioners on Monday. I have had conversations with maybe, maybe not one, just because of newness, but the rest of them. And they're supportive and really interested in learning more.
Good. They, so at one of their staff meetings, is that what you're...
Yeah, they're going to move because their staff meeting is the same time as council. So, but they're going to move something so that we can go next Monday. We're just finalizing the details.
And then maybe I'm jumping ahead, but what would be the next steps after the county and then, you know, workshop? And then what do we do?
Sure, I could try to jump in on this. So, you know, the path that we've envisioned and discussed thus far is that hopefully the, you know, after you all have gotten a chance to review and, you know, suggest any changes and finalize the plan, then hopefully you all would adopt, the county could also adopt the plan. And then, you know, that first recommendation around appointing a joint city-county advisory body called a food and farm council, I would envision as the first step. Because once you have that stakeholder group of experts that represent a variety of voices in the food system, and once you have them around the table, they can take the rest of the plan and start to implement the pieces.
Thanks.
So, one more. I really like the idea, looking at the economic development impact of this. And I've talked on a few occasions with Donna Pearson McClish, Pearson's farm, about the work they do. But considering we just talked about our federal legislative agenda and if we can get this council appointed, there could maybe be some potential as we look at the regulatory piece of encouragement of local farming partnership and maybe even looking at the community gardens we have now. And if there's funding opportunities to help get entrepreneurs into that area, that might make a higher impact than $80 million if we can facilitate it right. I know it'd take a little longer than what I'm saying, but I wouldn't be me if I didn't say it now.
And just Vice Mayor, if you look on page 14, there is a, one of the, under objective one, one of the action steps is to support the expansion of existing mobile markets, especially in low-access neighborhoods. So that was something that was on our radar. And I think Donna was, had some input and involved in the process as well.
And one thing I might just add, you know, the value of food and farm council, absolutely. They can help identify those federal resources. So the Department of Agriculture, US Department of Agriculture, has taken a serious look at local food systems and has been funding local food systems development through the Farm Bill for the last several years. And there are several streams of federal grants through USDA that can help implement all of these projects. And what we saw in Douglas County is by having a food and farm council, we had the group to keep an eye out for the grants, to work, to develop the ideas for the grants. And over the time I was on the food policy council, we pulled in about $1 million in federal and private foundation funds to support the work of our food system plan and our food system. So, and often a lot of those grants actually require a stakeholder body that represents members of the food system. So by creating this council, you already can check the first box of a lot of those federal grants.
Well, this is exciting.
Further questions or discussion?
You know, I have to do it. I just want to thank Cory for being here today and for Eileen for joining us virtually. And again, congratulations to Tammy Creer. I wish she could be here to see her incredible work come to fruition, but she's exactly where she needs to be, home with her new someone to love. But thank you for everyone who's had a key role in this really exciting, you know, we had a problem in the community. We didn't just say we have a problem, we teamed together as we often do in Wichita and came up with what we think are some viable solutions. So thank you to everyone involved. And I'm looking forward to next steps.
Good seeing you, Horn. Thanks for your help on this. And I hope to hear more about the progress of this plan and how we implement it. So thank you for everything. We appreciate your help and also the help of your team.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Mr. Manager, keep us on track.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got one other item for you. A few months ago, you challenged us to look at the removal process for dangerous and unsafe structures. Specifically, I think the council was concerned about the time it took to remove properties, concerns you were hearing from neighbors about the adverse impact of those properties on their, the condition of their neighborhood. And so we're going to go ahead and show you what we discovered as we looked at the process and some suggestions we have for your consideration to move the process along.
Welcome. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Council. I'm Kayla Nethercott. I'm the Neighborhood Inspection Administrator with MABCD. I wanted to echo council member Tuttle and extend some thanks first for those who helped to develop this presentation, specifically Denise Peters in the city manager's office, who brought her expertise in process improvement to the table. Chris Labrum, Director, MABCD. And Scott Rigby, Assistant City Manager, also participated in putting this together. We're talking about the removal of dangerous and unsafe structures. And for the purposes of this conversation, we are focused strictly on residential. So the agenda for this point of the workshop is to look at our problem statement, to take a process review, both at a high level and a little bit more in-depth look, to look at the pain points that we identified in this process, and then to talk about improvement opportunities. I think you'll be excited when you see what we've worked out at the end as recommendations. The problem statement we identified is that dangerous and neglected housing structures average roughly 353 days to remove. We took a five-year look back on structures that have been addressed through this process, and that's what we've learned, is that it takes just about a year to get one taken care of. The process of condemning a structure is long by its design. It has several areas in which citizens interact with boards and elected officials to state their case for salvaging the property, to ask for more time to remove it on their own. So that due process, nothing that we're talking about today would eliminate or shorten that due process that those citizens have coming to them. But what we know is that during that time that we're waiting, that we're taking these properties through the process, that's when additional hard costs accrue. You will all remember, especially last fall, that's the most recent example that we have, is that abatement costs, tall grass and weeds costs, board up costs, the hard costs accrue at that, through those times, because these are vacant and neglected buildings, they're dangerous and unsafe. But also, I would venture to say that our partners in the police department and the fire department spend an inordinate amount of time on these properties as well. At that time also, we need to think about the intangible cost to the neighborhood and the surrounding areas. There's a well-documented correlation between blight and crime nationally. I suspect we're no different here in Wichita for that correlation. Plus, they're just huge eyesores. The neighbors don't like living next to them, they don't want to drive past them when they're coming and going through their neighborhoods. I would also venture to guess that of all the properties in your districts, you probably hear about these the most. We sure do, that's for sure. So our high-level overview of this process, today we're focused strictly on the condemnation piece of it. And I would just remind you that our goal is to reach resolution. We want to get that property into compliance. That doesn't always mean that it's the removal of the structure. And we'll see some statistics on that in just a moment. But for today, we're just focusing on that condemnation process. And to look at that a little bit more in depth, this is a snapshot, again, a fairly high-level overview of how this process works. There's quite a lot of detail and effort that goes into each step of the process, but this is what it looks like. Now, I'll start with the statistics. Again, our average processing time over the last five years has been about 353 days. The minimum amount of time it has taken us to remove a structure was 158 days. The maximum was 911. Now, so the Kaizan burst represents pain points, to use that term. Where does this process extend? Where can it extend? So we pinpointed the first area in a housing case. So just to point out what you already know, we don't go from receiving a citizen complaint to a condemnation case. There are some think we do and some wish we would, but that's not how that works. So we've worked at these in our housing case process for months, sometimes years, to try to reach resolution before properties are reviewed for possible condemnation. That works most of the time, it doesn't work all of the time. The first, the pain point is that it does take time to let that process work. So when it doesn't, the properties are unsafe and unsound enough that we think they're good candidates for condemnation, they're introduced to the Board of Code Standards and Appeals. And as you'll see, that board has an opportunity to hear from the citizens first, and then they have a decision to make. Do we grant an extension of time to allow them to remove or repair? Do we have them come back before the board? Or do we move it forward to city council? And they've exercised different levels of that option in the two and a half years or so that I've been here. That board can work with a property owner for up to six months before they would recommend that it moves forward to you as city council members. So that little pain point in property owner resolution can be an extension of time. Now, once they recommend that it comes to you, the process looks very much the same. We set a public hearing, the property owners can come to you and make their case, you as a group can make the decision to extend time or not based on what you're seeing and hopefully based on staff recommendations, because we're going to be giving you some direction at that time. Again, because we know how long we've spent working on this in a housing case before it gets to a condemnation case. It can loop around indefinitely, you are not bounded by the time that you can give an owner. And so at that point, your decision is extension of time or refer it back into the process and let staff take it through the removal. Again, there are many, many opportunities for citizens to be heard throughout this process. We've been communicating with them. We've sent them certified mail. We've published, we've posted on the property. In some instances, we've even had a private process server try to reach them on our behalf to serve them a UCC to bring them to court. So they do not get to the point that they're being referred for condemnation considerations and not know that that's happening. So I've got to be honest, this is where I got a little bit excited because we... So I've got to be honest, this is where I got a little bit excited because we started to look at the results and we looked back again at that five-year period and what we found was 113 structures have been addressed through this process in that five-year period and 50% of those were resolved with an outcome other than removal by the city. Now, I was surprised by that and I think I was because the other 50% that are not resolved by the city consume a lot of my time. So I, I found that a pleasant surprise in this review of process. Now, in those that were removed, 34 were, were addressed through the formal condemnation process and another 23 were addressed through an emergency demolition. Just a word about that. We would proceed with an emergency demolition when a structure is so heavily damaged, usually by fire, but it can be windstorm as well, that we can't secure it and make it safe for the public. Okay? So we have the option to do that and sometimes they are just simply so destroyed that, that there's no other option than that. It's not so much an impact on the process that we're reviewing, but it does take money to do it. Okay? It does take money to do that. Now, I would also point out, this is a very high-visibility part of what Neighborhood Inspection and MABCD oversees. High effort, but it's very low, low volume for us when you consider the fact that we manage about 10,000 cases a year. So, high vis, low volume. So with Denise's help, as we dug into some of the lean principles, we keyed in on the waiting aspect. And this is where our improvement opportunities rest. So historically and currently, our process has supported holding properties in a housing case status to let that, to let that work and work and work and work. We could do that to allow court to proceed. We could do it to see if a change of ownership would take place through a tax sale. There's all kinds of reasons why we would do that. We would also hold them in that housing case status to monitor funding. Now, here is where our, our lightbulb moment came on is we've not historically considered the fact that our process resolves about 50% of those cases with something other than demolition by the city. So, perhaps we have underestimated how many properties we needed to influx into that condemnation process because it can handle more than what we've been allowing it to do. So what we've done is we've created an artificial bottleneck outside of the process and that's where that, that waiting period is costing us additionally in terms of nuisance abatement, tall grass and weeds, board up, police activity. And that's when those properties become attractive nuisances in the neighborhood. Vagrants, animals, children, all sorts of things. No good comes of it, let's put it that way. So, we've identified opportunities and again, these are process shifts that will be fairly simple to implement. So we would recommend immediately progressing all structures that meet the criteria for dangerous and unsafe into that condemnation process and let that process do its job. Let me give you an example of what we're working on right now. We have 23 properties that are at some point in that condemnation process, either about to be heard by the Board of Code Standards and Appeals or somewhere past the council point for removal. There are another 18 properties that we're holding in that pre-condemnation status, they're still in housing case status, that have not yet been addressed. The other thing I would point out to you is that the condemnation process has a beginning and an end. You start it and it reaches some type of resolution. Housing cases are much more open-ended. We, we don't always reach a tidy resolution in that case status. So there's some, there's a case to be made that this is good sound logic to move forward with. There's also some opportunities for us to shore up our property owner accountability. We don't always ask, either at the staff level or the board levels, if the property owners have a demolition plan or if they have an engineer's report to support repairing the structure. Because remember, these are the worst of the worst. They're dangerous, unsafe, and structurally unsound. We don't historically or haven't, at least since I've been here, ask if they have a funding source to support either one of those plans. So we can do that. I mean, we can, we can tighten that up just a bit on the front end so you have good information, better information to work with as you make those decisions moving forward. Moving properties into a formal process, as we have seen from the results, will oftentimes incent an owner to, to take action that they've either been unwilling or unable to take before because of the accountability that the process gives. In pushing these programs, or pushing these properties into the condemnation process, we think we can, versus pulling them through, which is what we've been doing, painfully so in some instances, we believe we, we can increase the efficiency with, with which that process works by simply addressing more properties. So, a snapshot of current budget considerations, I'd be remiss if we did not touch on the financial impacts of this. Currently, the average cost to remove a structure through the formal demolition process is just over $8,000 a property. Emergency demolitions average about 7,400 property, or dollars per property. What we gain when we address properties through emergency demolition is we do not have the waiting time. So we eliminate the period of time that those additional costs are going to accrue as well as addressing a dangerous and open hazard to the public because remember, we're not going to be, some of these we just simply can't secure. Annual funding availability. Our general fund currently supports $61,330. In the general fund, we know that we're going to expend the money for emergency demolitions and those properties that are reviewed and approved for condemnation that are not CDBG eligible. So a fair number will be, but not all. CDBG funding has averaged about $75,000, excuse me, over the last several years. Now, I will say this because Sally Stang is in the room and we consulted with her yesterday. We have not always expended every dollar for CDBG demolitions, but that's because we haven't put enough properties into the process to fully utilize that funding because the process was taking care of those as we went. I think our mindset has always been that we approach those, that we enter into the process as though we're going to have to pay for them at the end. Well, statistics do not prove that to be true. So bottom line, increasing the number of properties entering the formal process can eliminate the current backlog and hopefully prevent those backlogs from occurring in the future. The throughput will increase and a true demand for condemnation processing will be evident because right now we're masking that because we're not influxing all properties into the process in a timely manner. Our target is to double the resolution of dangerous and unsafe structures, increase from 15 to 20 per year to 35 to 40 annually. Remember, low volume, high visibility. And it will also help us to, to better utilize CDBG funding for those properties that are eligible in those areas. In conclusion, these simple process changes will result in a more efficient reduction of dangerous and dilapidated structures throughout the city without in any way diminishing a citizen's due process opportunities. I'd be happy to take questions.
If I can just reinforce, on bottom line, it's not a bullet point, but you're going to be in a better position when these reach you because now you'll have a demolition report, you'll have an engineering report. You won't have someone who comes to the podium and says, "Well, I think I can fix it." And you go, "Well, we'll give you 90 days." Now you're going, they're going to be required when they come to you to be able to say that, from an engineering standpoint, the building can be salvaged and they have a funding source identified in order to be able to do that work. And I think that will really help you is, because I know those have been difficult hearings to this point.
And just to dovetail on that, please, please do not misunderstand. The takeaway from this is not that we're going to tear down a bunch more houses. I don't want that to be in any way construed as, as the outcome. I think the process will help us resolve more cases and situations. Again, we haven't, we haven't put that to, to full use yet. So, I think the people that you hear from the most in your districts about dangerous and dilapidated structures that they're near or pass by frequently would be very happy with these process changes.
I know a few folks in District One might want you to tear down warehouses. I'll probably hear that today. Could we add, I, I really like this property owner accountability. So one question I always ask because it's in your report is about back taxes and sometimes it's in there and I, I remember the case, it might have been 2018 where back taxes were like three or four thousand and I think that was the same case. I asked Councilmember Blue about his thoughts on timeline, but between the taxes and repairs was maybe 15,000 and I, I kind of assumed they couldn't come up with that pretty quickly. If that was a part of the accountability too, what, what does a payoff look like, just to add to it?
So typically, when, when there's any extensions given, there can be conditions that, that you would impose, that the property is maintained and secured, that the back taxes are brought current within the, you know, the next 10, 15 day, whatever it is. And then if not, those would automatically default to continue through the process. So, so to answer your question, there is some, some constrictions we can put on that, some time constrictions, time constraints, easy for me to say, that can help you manage that process because you're exactly right. If the property taxes are in arrears three years, the properties aren't being maintained, the abatement costs just continue to mount, the likelihood of them, of the owner being able to manage all of that if they haven't already is pretty slim.
Yeah.
Kayla, I have a question. Thank you. This is very interesting.
Isn't it?
And I can see from the budget considerations that we should be able to do this. I mean, it's like we would run out of money based on the five-year, at least the five-year average. What kind of, how does this, I could see that this could make staff more efficient and more effective. Could you talk a little bit about kind of the, what you would see from that potentially?
You bet. So when we're maintaining those properties in those housing cases, in that housing case status, when we know they really should be referred, that is taking my inspector's time to manage those cases, to continue to, in some instances, communicate with court, to monitor the circumstances of the property for compliance with abatement, board up, and tall grass and weeds. If we could move that forward a little more quickly, certainly my inspectors would be relieved and have more time to spend on other things. Now, in terms of the process of condemnation itself, once it reaches that point, it's really myself and one administrative aide that manage that. So then it impacts the, the convening of boards, the frequency with which we come in front of you, but, so we'll feel it, we'll feel a load increase in that. But again, the process is designed to, to have a much bigger influx than what we've had.
Well, I could just see, based on the, the cases I get, when we get one of those from a neighborhood, the amount of time it takes from you and your inspectors to deal with my questions even. And if things, and, and if things, and with neighbors' questions, right? Who are going, what, what's going on? So I could just see a benefit of that, of, 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 you know, of faster throughput, but also, well, faster throughput, I guess, because of the efficiency with, with staff time also.
And that would eliminate those inquiries, it certainly would. They'd be able to see, because right now, what happens is things are going on behind the scenes, but the neighborhoods don't see that because the property conditions don't change and then sometimes they actually worsen.
Yeah.
So if we had a little bit tighter process on working through this condemnation consideration, we would be in a better position to answer those neighborhoods. We don't want to feed the perception that the city's not doing anything. And sometimes I think that's probably what you hear is that the city's not doing anything. Well, we are. It's just not the things that you can see because it's not resulting in that on-the-ground and in-the-neighborhood fix that they're looking for.
Thank you.
Other questions or discussion?
Well, I will say thank you for all your work on this. This will be good news. I will be emailing a few folks today with, with this, but.
Like I said, I kind of got excited. I was a little hesitant first and then after we got some results, I'm like, okay, this is going to be just fine. So.
Well, this is where data becomes really important. I mean, to look at that, where 50% are resolved, it's like, without demolition, it's like, well, we didn't know that, right? I mean, we had the data, but we didn't, we hadn't analyzed it, so that becomes really important.
We just looked at it in a very different way. And again, I will tell Denise, thank you again for that. She challenged me to, to really unpack this process in a way that we hadn't done before.
For the discussion. See none, thank you. Mr. Manager, what else we have?
I think that's it.
That's all?
That's it. Yep.
All right. Well, we're not in a formal meeting, so we don't have to do a motion to adjourn. Therefore, if there is no objection, then we will adjourn. See no objection, we're adjourned.